Okay. Okay, let's get started. Um, today we'll be talking about uh hyper and Noah. Alright, uh, I per. Noah. So, hyper Noah is a, a direct extension of Nova. IVC's particle. And there. I think the, uh, the. The main contribute of contribution of hyper Noah is that. It is provides a so-called multiple multi. Uh folding scheme. More multi uh. Folding scheme. Um, because in Nova that uh for at the each IVC step, we can only fold one. Uh incremental instance into a running instance. But in a, in the hyper Noah system, literally, we can fold more than one. For example, four or five is ten or one hundred. Running instances, oh, sorry, uh incremental instances into a. A running sense. So that's why it's God's name. Um, but personally. I think they. Uh, the another main contribution of heaven or actually is the remove. It is uh, it removes the. Uh removing of uh. Cross terms. Cross term. Hmm. The basic idea behind removing of Chris cross terms is that. In hyper Nova uh introduce a. Um bigger folding verifier. Uh inside the folding verifier, it remove it prove actually check the chaotic um. Operation of a constraint system. Living other linear uh relations. Uh into accumulator. So because the. The left uh relations are linear uh relations. So that such that we can easily to use our uh use a random linear, a random number to. Randomly accommodate them together. Uh regardless, the number of incremental instances. So today we'll uh go through the. Uh detail. And all the formulas behind this idea. Okay, um, the first part. Uh let's revisit the R1S relation. Revisit R1CS. Um, okay. Um, R1 says, uh. Has a triple of A B C three matrices. Sorry. Each of them is a matrix. Of a filled elements. The size is I'm times M. Uh, the. Uh, okay. And R1 says also has a assignment. Assignment. Let's use the Z vector. Um, actually, it's a, a triple. Of uh. X vector. And a constant number one. And a vector of witness. Uh, so let. Hmm. Public. Input. Witness. So we got the following equation of R1 says um constraint. Saying that A. Times A vector Z. Uh, had the mark. Product. Is B times the vector. Um. Equals to. C times the vector. So. And traditionally, we use different physics protocols to. Uh. To prove. That the assignment satisfy this equation for some pre-defined A B C matrices. Alright. So we can easily. Uh reduce this um. This equation into two parts. Um. Suppose we have three variable, three vectors. Uh V VA equals to. A times the vector. Yeah, because A is M times M matrix. And times a um. M size. Z vector is the I'm size vector of a field elements. Yeah. Then we can have that vector VA is also a vector with lens M, right? Because the matrix is M times them. So uh we use another variable. VB. Uh vector VB equals to B times. The. We see times the those who. See times. Right? So the, they are three equations. Because, because the three um equations are also linear. Constraints, so we, we give them a name. Uh so-called a lean check. And uh, the other constraint of R1 says uh. Um constraint is uh. We verify. Vector A had a mother, had a mother. That's right. VB. Equals to. We see. So the name of this equation is road check. Why we got a. Um, the role, right? Because uh. Um. Each element of. Um. A VA is actually a, a one rule. Of the matrix A uh with inner product with uh Z. So it one rule uh correspond to one gate or one constraint. Uh in the circuit. Okay, the idea is simple, right? If we want to prove a, a circus satisfiability problem, we can reduce that. Uh, uh, a string into two parts, link hack and the road check. Uh, alright. Okay, any question? No question, we just move on to the second part. Um, right. Now what I want to do is to design. Um, a folding scheme to fold multiple R1CS instance into one. Such that we. Just prove the final foodie the instance. Uh at the end. Um. With, you know, the minimal minimized the cost, so we don't have to do um, uh. Generate generally improve for many, many steps, so that's the why. The food scheme is so important. Uh, second part is we quickly. Uh, go through the some check and MLE, okay? MLE. And some check. So MLE. Hmm, is that suppose we have a vector. Um. The size then. Then we can. Um, build. Uh tilde A X. Hmm, a polynomial. Um. Equals to AI. For all X. Oh, vector, sorry, yeah, for XI. Uh for all X vector belongs to. Binary string with length of S. Here S equals to log N. Log N. Uh, that means that the tilde uh to the. AX. Actually is a most multi varied polynomials. Hmm. Generated by polynomial interpolation. Okay, here we, we give the, the, the equation, sorry, give the definition of today. We can construct to the X. Like. Hmm. It's a sum. Of. Right? Hmm. Wait. AI times. Told you equal. Okay, here, till the you call. XY. Hmm. Is called. Lagrange polynomials. Um, Lagrange polynomial. Yeah, here we also gave the definition of tilde. Okay, alright. So. Tilde AX. Is the, is the. In coding. Of the vector A. Right? And then the some check. Hmm, okay, some check is such a protocol that between a prover and a verifier. Uh, sorry. Some check. Uh, some check. Some check. Can reduce. Um. Submission. To. Um. Off. To. Right now, me. Either. Eval. Sorry, evaluation. So I'll give the example that if, for example, if we want to prove that uh. Hmm. Right? Next. For some H. Then we can use a some check. Protocol between uh when proven and a verifier, then we can reduce that problem into another. From that A to the. Eval at some point. Uh randomly chat randomly selected by the verifier. Uh, if. The evaluation equals to some C, sorry, sorry, some H prime. So that's the some check. Okay. Just quick goes through the preliminaries. Okay. Next. Let's propose the. Okay, let's revisit, revisit the Nova, okay, revisit the Nova. Then we will um, um, turn the Nova into hyper Nova. By using some check. So reveal Nova here, and Nova is IVC, IVC protocol. IVC scheme. Uh. Here we have a, a circle. In the circuit. We have two parts. Uh, first, you say the application business logic. Uh calculate FAI equals to I plus one. And also Nova encoded encodes or invent invents the uh. For uh, uh folding verifier. Sorry, for the new affair into the circle. And each step. The circle will. Um. Will give us, will give us a. A, a instance. I. And J. Okay, here J is the witness. I plus one since. Yeah. And we got another folding. Same proverb. Uh folds. Right? Hmm, so it's. I I. J I. With. Ri and SI. Into another um, into a new running instance. Ri plus one and SI plus one. In the same time, the, 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 the fooding if are inside the circle that will check if the folding. Done correctly. So we have to uh feed the. Uh. I I. And Ri. And a commitment of, sorry, um. Commitment of a key across term, coming out cross term into the fully verify. Now check if the. The full day the running instance is Ri minus one. So the actually they are the same thing. The same thing. Yeah, I can draw another. Next step of the IVC. Yes, and we can. Right? And we'll have for the next. I must I plus two and J I plus two new uh incremental uh instance witness pair. They will see. They are same. Next step of folding prover. Which one? As I press one. Alright. This the. Scheme of Nova, alright. So in a harbor, Noah, we. We will um. Replace folding verify with a multiple folding verifier. With inside some check. Okay. Let's uh. Present the, the multiple folding scheme. By using some check. Okay. Uh, uh folding. Prover. Uh, it's the left hand side. And a folding. Verify here. Um, they both have a, a running instance. Okay, running instance. Okay, running instance, oh, sorry. All the folding. Scheme. Uh, so we have to define uh what a incremental instance is and what a running instances is. Increase. Mental. Uh. Instance. Witness pair. Say. Witness commitment or witness. For example, W. One, sorry. And a um. Sorry, witness, yeah, witness. Um. Yeah, X two. The public input. So I use semi column to separate the instance with tense. Yes, alright. Uh, for a running sense. With his pair. It will be uh more complicated. Uh, it has a uh. A folded. Hmm, probably inputs. A folded. Uh, witness commitment. And they. You. And uh. A random. Uh, random vector. R. And VA. Bar, we add a bar on top of them. We see. So. Okay, um. Uh, when we first, first look at this definition, it looks weird, but we will explain. Uh, why it got this form, okay? Um, suppose now we have uh. Um, both, both in where provide fair fair have one. Uh incremental instance um needed to be folded. Uh, give them a, a subscript one and the running instance with this pair we got. Uh, we put. The subscript two here. Sorry, no, uh. Sorry, I don't have this. Oh. Alright. Uh, folded. Alright. Okay. Um. In the first round. In the first round. Because there's no uh cross term or error term in the hybrid Noah, so. We don't have to, the prover don't have, uh, doesn't have to send a commitment of cross term. So instead, the fooding verify will give a hmm. Challenging numbers, a couple of challenging numbers. Uh, first the alpha. Um, uh. The rest of channel numbers, we give them name beta. Beta is uh. Hmm, as. Uh, filled, filled elements. Right? Now, we have to construct a giant polynomial. Um, to uh. To encode. This two. Parts of constraint of a R1 says instance within spare. Simultaneously in one polynomials. In one polynomial, okay, so that's um. We will give it a domination and then we can. we will give it a denomination and then we can, um, um, uh, take a closer look at each, um, element of, or each, uh, gradient solve this problem. Uh, let's define a polynomial, uh, sorry. G X. Uh, right, X, right, G X. Define, define as a Q X. Um, just, just, uh, just a reminder that, uh, the, hmm, the, the equation that I will write is different from a different from the, the, the equation presented in the paper because, uh, I use a simplified version, the easy, easier to understand. Q X. So. And alpha times L A X plus alpha square. L B alpha two three times L C X. Okay, so what is, uh, L A, we first define L A. It's a low degree multivariate polynomial. Fine, S, K, theta equal R, sorry, we use a different color. X times Y. Uh. Wait, mid. Let's define another. Hmm. V A. Alright, uh. Find the name. Uh. Yeah. Um. Wow. Why? There's same one. We see. One. Next, uh, um. Okay, what are they? Um. Okay, actually, they are the encoding. The encoding is a low degree extension, not a modular linear, because not linear polynomial. It's a, uh, low degree extension of A times A vector. Yeah, that's, uh, A times the vector, right? So it's in code of eight times the A vector and this ones here, Z, Z, Z one, Z one. Yeah, we have to define another three, uh, polynomial. V A two. Uh, looks very similar, except that the matrix, matrix, hmm, is multiplied by Z two. Z two. Um, okay, here. Z one. So. Makes one one constant one and, uh, the assignment, right, so assignment. X two. U. W two. Alright. A two. Okay. Uh, we can easily see that they actually, they are A times the two. Here, Z two is the vector of, um, a folded result of many, many, um, many, many assignments, uh, of the previous, uh, steps. And about B times Z two. C times Z two, right? Okay. Um. With this auxiliary, uh, polynomial, we can easily define G X, let's go back to the definition of G X. Yeah, here is, uh, um, the V, sorry. V A two. Uh. Next. Hmm, yes. Yes. L B Y, sorry. X, define, I notice. Yeah. When I would define the Q X, okay. Q X. Hmm, Q X, it's like a theta equal. Hmm. Beta, sorry, we use, uh, so random random numbers. Times hmm. V A one. Yeah, V one, the empty share. Times V P one. Minus V C one. Yeah, alright. I'm sorry, this theta. Yes. Alright, let's, um, take closer look at this, um, the giant polynomial. And the Q X actually is, uh, is for checking uh, V A times V B minus V C if, uh, the result is zero. So actually it does the, the, uh, the, uh, the road check. Yeah, that's for the road check, okay? Uh. Road check. And, uh, for this three, um, polynomials are are, uh, for the link check. Um. So now we are at the both provider verifier are engaged into a sum check. Um. Uh, sorry, aggregated some check protocol. So one big sum check, actually it does for some check in parallel. Um. Verify that, uh, hmm. Uh, this one if to equal to zero and this one if equal to V C bar. Yeah, V C bar from here. V C bar. V B bar, V bar, V A bar. V B bar. V, V A bar. Yeah, the, the sum check actually is, uh, aggregated some check. Or a, a some check over aggregated polynomial, um, randomly combined by the alpha. Okay. So some check, so it's a some check, sorry. Some check, check what, check G uh, X, sorry. Some check, check a sum, right, it's a big sum. X, sorry, ah. G, sorry, capital G. G X. If it could still zero plus alpha times V A bar. Uh, it's another pen. V A bar. Plus alpha times uh, V B bar. Plus, sorry, alpha square, alpha two three times V C bar. So after a, um, logarithmic, um, number of, uh, uh, steps, the sum check will reduce uh, reduce this equation into another equation. Reduce to X uh, with another uh, vector of, uh, challenging numbers, random challenging numbers from the proof, verify, some check verify. If equals to some H prime, some, some H prime. Okay, H prime is a folded, uh, uh, sum. Okay. Um. Right, in the following, uh, the footing verifier will check will check, check this equation, because some check is re, is reduction, reducing uh, this, uh, this equation to this equation. The, now F prime, H prime, um, was re, um, was from the, the folding, uh, the some check prover. So, um, and so the, the problem is how, how, how can we ensure that, uh, this equation holds? Right, the next step is prover will provide some, uh, evidence. Uh, we, uh, call them V A. Sorry, V. Yeah. V one, V E one, V C one, V A two, V B two, the V C two. So what are they? Uh, sorry. V A one equals to um, uh, V one is T. Sorry. Right one, the the polynomial evaluate at this new challenge number. Okay, you remember that we have, uh, it have already a, a challenge, hmm, sorry, the random challenge, random challenging number from the running sense, running sense with his pair. And the, it's, uh, it's from, uh, the last round, last step, I V C step. Now here we, in, in this, uh, some check. The, actually, the some check verify will, uh, provides a new R prime vector for random chain. Uh, so the prover have to reevaluate this, uh, six polynomials at the, sorry. Random challenge, um, R prime. So we write them down. V B one. V C one. V one. Uh, also, V A two. A two. V B two. V B two. V C two. Sorry. C two. R prime. R prime. R prime. Um. Yeah, at this moment, the folding verifier will trust, okay. Uh, we will trust at first, uh, sorry, um, don't trust verify. The, 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 but at this step, footing verify will trust here or trust that uh, the six elements were, um, honestly computed by this equations from the prover, from, uh, you know, some unknown prover. Hmm, but the, the verify will delay, uh, the checking, sorry. The checking of this six elements in the next step. Put them into the accumulator. Alright, so. Hmm. Yeah, the verify will verify so that verify can verify this equation. so that verify can verify this equation. But uh the verify have to evaluate this one by herself. Hmm. Uh, you have to evaluate E U, E one equals to uh uh, Q. Um. Beta. All right. And A two. Sorry, uh, yeah. E one, E two, tilde E two. And yeah. Right, the verify now can verify if this equation hold. Uh, so let's check it, because Q X uh because Q X is a zero polynomial, so Q X will be zero. Is always zero. Uh, so the left hand side of this, this equation uh will be zero plus hmm, alpha times um. L A, right, L A is a E two times, right, L A here. Uh, this part is E one, uh, sorry, E two, and this part is V A two times V A two. And plus alpha square. E two. V. All right, now square, now, um. V E two. And uh plus alpha two, three times E two times V C two if equals to H. And I'll definitely have to verify uh V. Uh, yeah, sorry. One. Uh, sorry. Hmm. Yeah. Times V. B one. Minus V C one. Times um E one. If was equal to zero. Sorry. Yeah. Okay. Um, if the two equations hold, then the verify will uh give uh the prover the uh folding factor role. Folding fact role, and the both of them will do uh the folding simultaneously, except that prover will additionally fold the witness. Well, uh, at same time, there, uh, verify doesn't have to be, have to do this job because verify hmm, doesn't have any information about witness. So the uh with uh uh folding factor, the both of them will do the following work. Um, so let's recap the the running instance witness, so um both of them will output a new running instance with despair. Here, um, the the witness, sorry. The witness star. The vector equals to hmm. Vector plus sorry. Times and uh the public inputs. And uh the E star. Row times one. Hmm, what else? Yeah, the new, um, yeah, the the R star will be the the R prime vector from the some check, the inside of some check protocol. Uh, and uh the V A bar equals to um star and right, star, because so um. Um. Yes. The uh V A two. Sorry, no bar here. Uh, yeah, uh, yeah, nobody here. Row times V A A. And V B bar star. Still B B two plus row times V B one. V bar sister. V C two plus row times V B. Sum is C one. All right, let's use another color. Two. Two, I've, I've says, that's a uh, you saw here. Yeah, and also the prover will for the commitment. That's right. For the the witness. Uh, all right. Yeah, we most, uh, we almost finished. Okay. Let's uh go more intuition about this uh about folding scheme. Um. Here we can see the folding verifies um hmm uh more complicated than the folding verify from a Nova system. Because uh there is a some check in the folding verifier. So the usage of, of some check is to remove trying to prove the correctness of quadratic operation of a road check. And uh uh leaves all of this, all of this, oh, three, three of those link check are seeing, um, meaning that they are linear relations, so they can be easy combined folded with a hmm, uh, uh with a random, uh, random number from verify. Uh, so because uh all the elements folded are linear relation, so it can easily achieve multiple folding scheme. And, and at same time, and simultaneously, and um uh and also they, they just remove the, the cross terms, that's the, the basic intuition behind behind the, the some check. Because, because uh in the, in the F C scheme, something like that, uh, we, we will remove the, the commitment on the cross term. Hmm. And uh um, actually, the some check does the job of the first part of Spartan uh stark, another stark proposed by uh Serna thirty um, two or three years ago. Hmm. So I think that um this pattern is actually um very different from the pattern proposed by Nova. Um, but it also introduces an um a brilliant idea or insightful idea that uh if uh for all linear relations that we can easily to combine them together. For nonlinear relations, we can use another techniques to uh prove them in advance or um, or press, or, or design another mechanism to fold them or prove them. Yeah, that's basic, they, they the intuition behind hypernova. Hmm, as far as can see that um, the papers said that uh in folding, uh, multi-folding scheme or hypernova, there's only one uh scalar, scalar multiplication inside the, the folding verify, but, but at the same time, they introduce logarithmic number of hashes in the, a folding verifier, so folding verifier is not O one. Um, O one operations, actually, it's all log N operations, so it's not easy to say if hypernova is a better than Noah or not, okay, I think it depends on, on the the concrete implementations. Uh. So we almost done. Okay, any question here? So even can you stop the recording? So we can discuss in China.